Okay, hello everybody. Welcome to our Board of Selectmen's meeting of June 22nd. I held in person and with Zoom capabilities. As per existing orders which expire, you know, we can change. So we're going to start moving, I think July 1st. We're going to start moving to in-person meetings with availability if the separate commissions so desire. But let's call the meeting's order at 6:31. We almost made it. And.
Can I add something to the agenda?
Yep, please.
Like add the tax credit refund to the agenda?
Okay, good. Let's, let's put that on at a number between five and six. So that'd be number six now. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on June 8th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the June 8th, 2021 meeting.
My second, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next item is Audience of Citizens. I know we have Mr. Nagid here to speak to us about a fundraiser for War Memorial. So can you turn that and put him right on the camera?
Well, as you all know, we moved the platform at the Columbia last November. Upon removing the old bricks from the platform and taking them to the storage facility, we noticed there were names written on the bottoms of the bricks. I went through minutes that was given to me from Linda Negrelli from the Father Ed. And I came upon minutes from 10/25/1993, which talks basically about Johnny Holte and Ray Mazzati looking into bricks and stuff. The one paragraph I will need read for you. John brought in a sample of the paving bricks. That's Johnny Holte. John and Ray will see how many of these committee can sell at the cost plus to raise money for the second phase of the platform. Anyone buying a brick for the platform can sign the back of the paving brick purchased. So I called Angus the next morning or that morning, and he said, these bricks need to go back somewhere on the green, and I agree with him. Okay, so we went through 4,000, over 4,000 bricks. It didn't seem like we finally finished something. We came up with 371 bricks with names on them.
Wow.
We identified 364. There are only seven bricks that we cannot identify the names on. And also, the 15 white bricks are white bricks. Okay? So I thought about what are we going to do with this? And I thought about putting a separate platform on a green nine by nine so that when they set up their rules and stuff out there for concerts, then Angus, Sally, and I put our heads together on Memorial Day. It didn't seem like too good of an idea. So then Angus came up with the idea that we wanted to do something with the slate walkway that goes around the platform on Columbia. But either taking them up or cleaning them up. And I said, well, if we're going to do that, why don't we take some up, take the 371 bricks and reinstall them there on that little walkway alongside them? Because that's basically what these people donated their money for so that their answers would be on the platform. So how do we pay for them? We would like to do a fundraiser at the Lace Factory. We met with Andrea, and the best date would be Wednesday, November 3rd. For two reasons, being a weekday, we would get a better price. And two, that's the only day that she has with both rooms, the Riverview room and the lower room is available to us. Okay? We're talking about wine and cheese and not dirt and stuff. So I need your permission to go ahead and witness here. And we'll have to get signs made up, tickets made up, and things like this here.
Do you have any ideas how much this would cost to do this?
Once I get your approval, I will meet with the committee, tell them what the price that Andrew has given us.
No, I mean for the price, the bricks, what then where are you wanting to send it?
No, 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 no. That's also why I'm here, is to have you gentlemen agree this is what we want to do. As soon as you agree, I'll get in touch with Sean and get a price for him.
Well, that's my, my thoughts, maybe. Right, we'll talk once.
Also, I'm thinking that we could also do some kind of a fundraiser going around to the merchants to get $50 gift certificates, $25 gift certificates, and sell, sell tickets for a dollar a piece, you know?
I think it's a great idea, but the only question that I have is how legible are the names on the bricks?
And how will they, will, will those names be up?
No, 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 no. The names, the names were down. So that's, this is what the, the whole of the committee, we, we never thought about this. We thought about selling bricks with the names on the top, and then we didn't. And if we didn't have people signing, we could have paid for this platform 10 times over if we do this a year and a half of them.
I thought you were going to say I followed this.
No, 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 no. The names are going to go down. They're going to go right back the way they, they did.
Maybe some sort of, maybe some sort of, you know, so people know that those bricks are special bricks, not just bricks.
We could, we could do that. We could do that. Yeah. Yeah. I also would like maybe seeing how the 15 original bricks are actually white bricks. They're not painted, all right? I painted those because they were, they were so deteriorated. I painted them back in 2010. So when, when we took them and I picked them up, I was, God, these bricks are white. I took them home, I scrubbed them, I put it in bleach. I did everything. But there's no, there's no cleaning the bricks up. They're, they're just, you know, they're not really a pure white. They're more like a hive. I mean, when Sean was doing this, we looked into getting white bricks, and we just couldn't do it. That's why the bricks that are up there now are painted, you know? That's what we'd like to do. So if, you know, you give me to go ahead, I'll meet with the committee, and then I'll get back with you as soon as we set a price and stuff and.
I think that's a good idea. Why don't we get, get those prices, and then we can exit.
You know, one of the things.
That's, that's mine.
One of, one of the things that we've been asking for donations, we've been asking for donations, one of the things that I learned that when I was taught with the Historical Society, when you give some people something for their money, then they're worth it, you know? And the Riverview room holds 49 max. That's counting staff. So we're limited to maybe 44, 45. Where the lower room, it's, it's over 100, you know? So like I said, if I get your blessing, we will start moving forward with this. Five months is going to go by fast now.
But the, the, the price of the project shouldn't be that expensive. You already have the product.
We already have the product.
You don't have it all the later.
Right, also, and it doesn't have to be as fancy and secure as, as the platform. These don't need to be set in concrete or anything. They could just be, be set in dead sand or, or stone or something.
Exactly.
Yeah, but they should, they should because these people paid to have their names on the platform, they should go back.
Absolutely. And we can let, we can let Sean or John or whoever takes the job tell us how they should be secured.
Yeah.
But this really is part of the project that Rich talked about. We did the platform, now it's great, but the blue stone around it really is bound on even the things that should be, it should be brought right up to the same level. So we can do this as part of that platform, get that cost.
And another thing, if we're good, if we're going to do the walkway around the platform, we maybe want to think about doing around the flight pole too. That's over there Saturday, and that's, that's just as bad as the walkway around the platform. And I don't know if you gentlemen noticed on Memorial Day, people up there on that platform, looking at the granite blocks, the platform, people taking pictures in front of the Columbia, like that gentleman from Westport said. Most unique and most beautiful thing that ever, Memorial for weapons you've seen in the state.
Yeah, well, why don't we, why don't you go ahead and get the plan and get the proposals that you need, and then come back with those numbers, and we can actually act on that. Anything that has to do with the Lace Factory efforts on that, if you can, so.
Yeah, I, I fully understand it.
Well, I think my only answer to that is if you get back and you give a quote for next hundred dollars, you know, it might be that somebody or some people might be able to step up and do a donation.
We have, we have, we have the price, we have the price from Andrea for.
No, no, for, for the project, the project.
Oh, okay.
The project number, like I said, it maybe doesn't be huge, it might be that you might be able to buy some of those that we'll pay for. So you don't have, you don't have to go through the, the process of, of having a fundraiser and all that.
Well, let's, let's, let's remember this here too. There's always going to be, there's always going to be maintenance and upgrades. There's 14 active duty servicemen from Deep River right now. And when these servicemen, servicewomen get discharged, they get a granite block. Every one of those granite blocks between half the block bay and half the install, I'll be looking at about $200, $200. So you're talking, you know, I, I'd like to have a kitty. I mean, every so many years, though, at Brickwork, there at the Columbia is going to have to be water breaks, you know?
From agents.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's good. I think fundraiser could help.
I, I think so, yeah.
Keep aware of that, so.
Yeah, the committee added on with Jim Marshall, did a cheese thing at the, at the Carriage House. And that worked out very good. So this is how I came up with this idea. We looked into the carriage house, but oh, forget about it. Got to get a one-day liquor permit. Somebody has to put their homeowners insurance, but this, this is, you know, we have nothing to worry about. We don't have to go in there, set up tables and clean up or anything, so, yeah.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, I will, I will get going on this. I'll have a special meeting with my committee and get back to you in a few weeks, okay?
We're good.
Thank you very much.
All right. I don't see any other Audience of Citizens other than our esteemed Fire Department Commission. So let's, why don't we move right on to the next item on the agenda, which is Fire Department Discussion, Fire Department Purchase and Other Business. I'd like to ask if you can give us a description of the fire truck. I'd like to work on the fire truck first. I know you guys have other things to do, but let's get the fire truck resolutions taken care of, and then we can move on to some of your other comments.
We're happy to do so. What I'll do is I'll just briefly recap what we discussed at the meeting last Thursday. Very simply, reported last week, the new engine committee, Truck Committee for the Fire Department sent out packages to six different vendors for new engine. That's nothing new. We've known about that for a while. We received four packages back from four different vendors. All four sets of pricing came back over the $700,000 appropriation shown in this year's budget. Met with you folks last week and last Thursday, of course. And after a pre-licked discussion going all over all of what the committee had done along with our third-party consultant, we chose to go with a particular vendor, and we brought that price to you folks. And with Bud also. The truck alone, just the truck, like I mentioned last week, is 750,000, 163 dot 64. Don't ask me why it's such a unique number. Why they could have been 750,000, 163 dot 64. And that is for the truck only. The other part of this project is what we consider to be miscellaneous equipment. And that is the equipment that is not supplied with the truck, but is necessary to put the truck into service for, for the Fire Department and the taxpayers in Deep River. That consists of radio equipment, third-party vendors to install that equipment. Most of the manufacturers choose not to do that during the construction process. And the other miscellaneous stuff, references, homes, tools, appliances, flashlights, ancillary stuff like that. I mean, the truck we're replacing is 1983. For sure, we are definitely recycling as much equipment as we can from the old other truck over, but certainly there's not stuff that we cannot. So the, the ancillary stuff adds up to about $40,000 on top of the 750. So we're a little under 790,000. I'm not really sure what else I can tell you.
That's a good summary for the public.
Perfect.
Just appreciate that.
Along those lines, what we need to do, the process for us, and we have our bond counsel, Bruce Jobbitt from Shit and Goodness here with us tonight, to make sure that I don't goof this up. But there's, there are a couple of different resolutions that we have to approve to move this forward. Number one, to increase the appropriation by $100,000 up to 800. And then a second resolution to call a special town meeting. So I think that the way these have been put together, we can do both of those right now because it's, it's, it says it's anticipated that Board of Finance will recommend. So we can call the meeting if for some reason they don't, we don't have to handle it, but I anticipate that they're going to. So rather than stay in session and have to act again later on, we can do both of these today. And I think, I think that Bruce is nodding affirmatively to that. So he's muted. I think he was. We emailed you guys both of these as soon as we got them today, assuming you had a chance to review. If you have any questions about them, or if anyone here has any questions, Bruce can answer them much better than I can. If not, then I think we can move straight to, to moving and voting on both of these Any thoughts?
Okay, well, I think we, we discussed, you know, last Thursday.
Bruce, here's a question for a resolution. Do we have to move, take a motion in a second to adopt the resolution?
Yes, Angus, you should do that for each of them separately. So first resolution.
Okay, good. So if we can have a motion to, to adopt the first resolution to increase the budget by 100, or the rest, the appropriation by $100,000. So we can move for that. Okay, so any discussion? All those in favor? I'm going to read it so that the public can have a chance to sit here while we talk over the result. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the Town of Deep River increase the $700,000 appropriation approved at the May 17th, 2021 annual town meeting for the purchase of a new fire truck by $100,000 to $800,000. The appropriation may be extended for the purchase cost and related equipment, legal and administrative fees, interest expense on temporary borrowings, and other costs related to the purchase. Further resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $800,000. That's, we have a motion to, to adopt that in a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? The second item, as I described it, why don't I read that now rather than do it afterwards? That's a resolution to call a special town meeting. We'll need a motion in a second to adopt this. Whereas, the Board of Selectmen has recommended, and it is anticipated that the Board of Finance will recommend, that the Town of Deep River increase the $700,000 appropriation approved at the May 17th, 2021 annual town meeting for the purchase of a new fire truck by $100,000 to $800,000, and authorize the town to issue its bonds, notes, and other obligations in an amount not to exceed $800,000 to finance the appropriation. Be resolved that the attached detailed appropriation and bonding resolution for the purchase is hereby approved and shall be submitted to a special town meeting to be held on June, on Tuesday, June 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in accordance with the attached warning of the special town meeting, which is also hereby approved. That town meeting reads, "The electors and those eligible to vote in town meetings of the Town of Deep River, Hilt, Connecticut, are hereby warned and notified that a special town meeting will be held at the Deep River Town Hall, 174 Main Street, Deep River, Connecticut, on Tuesday, June 29th, 2021, at 7:00 PM for the following purpose. Item one, to discuss and vote on a resolution, A, to increase the $700,000 appropriation approved at the May 17th, 2021 annual town meeting for the purchase of a new fire truck by $100,000 to $800,000. B, to finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $800,000. So authorize the First Selectmen and Treasurer to determine the terms, conditions, and other details of the bonds, notes, or other obligations. To take actions under applicable Internal Revenue Service regulations to allow the town to make temporary advances of available funds and reimburse the advances from the proceedings of borrowing. And to issue the bonds, notes, and other obligations on a tax-exempt basis. And E, to authorize the First Selectmen to enter into contracts for the purchase of the fire truck and authorize town officials and employees to take all other actions necessary to complete the purchase and issue the bonds, notes, and other obligations to finance the appropriation. Copy of the full text of the resolution is on file and available for inspection at the offices of the Town Attorney." That's a mouthful, but that's, that's, that's what we need to do to, to get this, get this truck purchased. But we, Bud and I have been working with two different finance corporations. One, one are traditional bank, and the other is an organization out of Kansas that, that does this leasing and loaning for fire apparatus. They seem very confident, and they seem very, they've been very helpful up to so far. So those are the two. Interest rate right now is at three and a half. I don't expect that to drop, but I also don't expect it to go down. So can we get a motion in a second on this?
I make a motion to the resolution to call a special town meeting for the appropriation and additional funds.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion, any questions for Bruce? No? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those resolutions pair. We are halfway home.
Thank you, Angus, and thank you, gentlemen.
Bruce, thank you for your help. We'll be in touch.
Okay, I, I don't think I'll be able to get to the Board of Finance meeting tonight. I have another seven o'clock meeting, so.
Okay.
Fairly straightforward. Let me know if there's any issues, but it's the other, basically, their resolution's the same as yours, recommending the appropriation of bond authorization, so.
Yep. Okay. Good, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
So long, thanks for coming. Let's see, we have a big group of fire commission here tonight to, they wrote a letter to, to, to me the other day, and here to discuss that and other issues. So you guys can get the floor.
There's a letter from the trustees. You want to read that one?
I'm happy to go grab it if you want to. Reading quite a bit on here tonight. Okay, this is a letter from the Deep River Fire Department dated June 7th, 2021. It's Chief Officers, Deep River Department, Board of Fire Commissioners, Town of Deep River. The trustees of the Deep River Fire Department would like to see formal forward progress on the plans for the expansion of the firehouse. There seems to be a lack of interest in this project, as the only answers we are receiving is we are working on it, and we will get back to them. This has been the answer for quite some time with a question mark. The department purchased the house and property adjacent to the firehouse in 2007 using department funds with the intentions of using the additional real estate for the proposed expansion project. That was 14 years ago, and the property is currently costing the department money the longer it sits vacant. As you are aware, the real estate market is currently at a prime, and if there is no forward, formal forward progress within 60 days of this letter, the trustees will be considering placing the property up for sale. We look forward to a response. Sincerely, the Board Trustees, Tom Law, Richard Cypher, Cypher, and Dot Sampson. There are a couple of different points here. Happy to address the commission if that's what you'd like, or to the, to the Board of Trustees. And you both are welcome to come in or to, to comment or ask any questions about them whenever you, well, whenever you'd like to. To express that there's a lack of interest in this project is, I take a little bit of exception to that. I'm, I'm not confident that my responses have been, we are working on it, we'll get back to you with a question mark, has ever been my response. The truth of the matter is, we are working on it. The truth of the matter is, it's not working as quickly as any of us would like it to. And the truth of the matter is that there is, this has been put back into the First Selectmen's office. It was taken away from my office a year and a half ago, maybe a little more. And that was fine. That was a good thing to, to try and move this forward. I think Tim and I came to an agreement that, that I would, I would step back and that the Chair of the, of the Fire Commission would work with Jim to, to try to move the architecuals forward and keep the project moved. COVID struck, and, and nothing, nothing got picked up. In the meanwhile, I have been working with an engineering firm out of Cheshire, Mylon McRoom, to try and get all of the information to them and to get them to engineer the site so that we can have a finished product to bring to Munger Engineering or Munger Construction so that they can put together a formal cost so we can move it forward. And there's, there's no question that this has taken too long. It's taken 14 years, more than 14 years, I would suggest, because I, I believe that this was in the works before I even moved to town.
Is there a timeframe on your proposal?
I don't have, no, there is no timeframe. I, I'm giving, I, I am corresponding and have emailed information to Mylon McRoom. They're going, they're working on sending me a proposal as to what their costs are going to be to do. I have not received that proposal yet. I anticipate that once we get that, it should not be an extended period of time. They're, they're a gigantic firm, and they should have the horses to, to move it forward. But I don't have that information for them.
Is it possible, and this is just me talking, is it possible to have a projected figure that we can go with to a town meeting to approve the money? Are we kind of putting the horse before the car or?
No, the idea is, and listen, this is the first firehouse I've ever tried to build. I don't, the, the concept of this, as, as was explained to me by, by firms that, that do do this, is that we need to have work that is not for construction, but work, engineered drawings, and finished architecuals so that we can get real numbers from construction companies, so from Munger to go through and determine, these are the materials, this is what, this is how much bill you're going to need, this is how, this is what you're going to need to do to build it. They may not be finished for construction plans, but they're plans that give them an idea of what's going to happen. From that, they will give us the number. That's the number that we bring to town meeting. We can make up a number if we want to, but it's made up.
And I think that's similar to what just happened with the park. And we had, we had a number that was given to us in the past, and that's all we had to work with at the time, and. And that's all we had to work with at the time and we just had it. You know, we had to appropriate that extra hundred thousand dollars that had to happen. The long point is to say, nothing is moving in sixty days and the trustees sell the house. That's gonna change the whole aspect of the job.
Well, um, that, that's, there's a, the answer to that is, if trustees decide to sell that house, then we're gonna have to look for another site. Because that site barely will take on, the, the, that barely has the capacity to take on this project as it is. So if the trustees determine to sell that house, then the trustees have determined that the town is gonna have to look for another piece of property. And that's, that's that, we, if, if in fact, this group or any group wants to take this um, off, out of the first selectman's office, that is fine with me. Um, I can tell you that, I wanna say it was seven years ago, that Dick Smith um, put this on uh, on, on a committee to try and, and get this moved. I'm, I'm absolutely happy to, to, to give all of the information to someone else and try to move it. I would love to have, if it doesn't move, I would love to have weekly meetings with someone. Um, to, to try and ensure that people are not getting the impression that we're working on it and we'll get back to you. This is a cooperative effort, this is not for Angus to just do. This is a cooperative effort and it needs to continue to be a cooperative effort. I will work as hard as I can for this fire department, because it's for this town, uh, but. There's a lot of other things that need to be done and I'm trying as hard as I can. If that's not good enough, then let's find someone else and let's move it forward. Um, and that's, that's where my response is to that, to the trustees. That, that's up to them. There are many things that they can do, they're not paying the sewer bill on that anymore, they're not paying um, any utilities as far as I'm aware. Property can continue to be rented, it doesn't need to be a loss. Frankly, I think the property should be maintained and rented, but that's not up to me. So that's, that's my response to the letter, you guys are welcome to.
Can I ask you correctly, as Tim said, you're waiting for a proposal for the drawings or are you waiting for the drawings?
I'm waiting for a proposal. I've given them the information, they need to, they need to look at that, digest that and tell me what it's gonna cost.
To, to draw.
To, to, to draw it up, yeah.
And then you would have to give the money, appropriate money for the drawings, right?
No, no, that's, we have that in our budget already.
So the drawings we have, not covered, are good? They have to, they need engineered and preliminary construction ones, not?
The archi, the architecturals are, are not enough, yeah, yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, Angus, you were working, you had meetings personally with FEMA.
Mm-hmm.
I recently talked to another local town who has their main firehouse right on Route one. And they are in a flood plain and what the gentleman I, I was talking to said that they um, are looking to go to a different site because of.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they won't be eligible for a lot of grant money because the firehouse is in a flood. Do you know if that's a factor?
I know that we can't put our E O C there. Because of that, I have not heard from anyone that, that we can't, we, we're not gonna be eligible for grant money because of that.
Okay.
Um, it's obviously something that we wanna pay attention to, but I have not seen.
Right. And then, you know.
The grants, I haven't seen a lot of grants for volunteer fire department construction. I've seen a lot, a lot of grants for professional fire department construction. But not, um, which doesn't mean I've seen them all, but I haven't seen.
So as you said before, uh, Scott Bowden, who was the fire commission chairman, um. And Jim Olson, myself, were meeting for a little while there during Covid, so then, correct me if I'm wrong, we. We kind of got to the point, I think you were trying to set up a meeting with the architect, yourself, me and Scott and the architect. I had, I just, I had sent an email out, I sent the drawing of all the numbers.
Well, that's, that was.
Couple of comments back and we had some things that we agree on and some things that we wanted to ask questions on. And different placement things and orientation.
Yeah, there was more or less.
We never got to that point.
Correct, there was more or less, I'll, I'll use the term a final draft of what he, the architect thought. And what the members of the department thought.
Yeah.
And there were, I don't know if it was that much, and then that's when Covid hit.
So Angus, can you say someone else take over?
I would just, you guys are fine, I'll connect you with Valen and McCrum, you guys can just, say, keep, keep that ball rolling, it's finally.
I don't think it should be us solely doing it, I, I don't, um. I really don't think it should be us solely doing it, I mean, should we, should you, me and Steve, me like when we and Scott were and, and try to pick up where we left off?
We can, we can get some of those.
Absolutely.
Yep, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
Tom, the architect still?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we could meet with Tom.
Yep.
Okay, so if we do that, we, we.
Yeah, it's finally.
The emails, um, with the few things that a couple of members had questions on.
Yep.
And we address that.
Yep. So yeah, I, I, I have no problem with that, I have no problem with that.
So we can get that going again, if you're okay with that, Steve?
Okay, I don't, I, I, I will suggest, I don't, I don't think that we need to, we should continue to mess around with architecturals, I think we need to move. The footprint as it is to the engineer. And I, I, unless, if you guys start fiddling around with, with footprint of the building and things like that, then it's gonna change the scope.
Well, and what you have being proposed to that firm and that their study will, will drive. I think what, what the building and the footprint is.
Yep.
So that, that's a first step is to, you know, where does that building fit or not fit on that piece of property? And only that study you were talking about earlier can dictate that because of whatever issue or, or whatever, so I think that's a critical. Well, yes, engineering companies not looking into FEMA stuff, are they?
Oh, yeah, they have to, yeah, that's, that's exactly, they're gonna raise it up, they're gonna.
I think that's, I think that's actually a very critical first step is to, you know, we can, you know. Either if that building can fit on that, a new building or addition or, because there were various. Forms of buildings and, and projects that we, we talked about, I think that's a very vital first, first step.
Yeah, it'll fit there, it's a, it's a tight, it's a way, it's a tight space. Um, and FEMA, FEMA was very receptive too, and they said, you just have to bring the elevation up, there are things that we have to do. Um, that are gonna drive the cost up, but we can, we have, we can do that, it's all doable.
As far as um, the project and financing, have you put thought into, once you, I mean, you have numbers in your head and talk about the numbers. Who knows?
Well, who knows what those are now, yeah.
Have you, have you gotten to that point where you've projected out on thinking how you're gonna finance this or what your thoughts are, what the best timing is?
Well, yeah, my, my feeling on this, the board will, will talk about that, the board of finance will talk about it, the town will talk about it. My feeling is that we're going to, uh, we know that USDA will fund a, a lot of this money. The last round of uh, of federal money that, that we, we just received half of is not gonna fund any of this. But it might, uh, the second round might, um, I don't. There are grants we're gonna look for, you know, I haven't seen them yet, but I, there's lots of things that are coming up now. But USDA right now is that I, I think that they're, they'll fake, they'll loan us for, you know, forty year, forty year loan. For as much as we need to do it. And, and that, I would like to, very much like to fold this truck into that bar. But, you know, let's, let's see what the town feels like about doing that. You know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big number, I think we're looking at probably four million. I'd like to keep it lower, I had a three million dollar goal, uh, but, you know, who knows what, who knows what's gonna happen in a year's time? What's gonna happen with commodities, they'll come down once they can start coming into the country.
Your, your, it's very cheap, so it's gonna be, it's a wash.
Well, but, yeah, I'm, I'm not so sure about that, I think you're right a little bit of it, but I'm not sure that, that it's a long range thing. You know, I, I think it's just, but, but I don't know, if I, if I could answer that question, I'm not sure. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. Yep.
You can apply with fifty five.
Yeah.
And so the, so the other part of this, um, that plays into the building, um, which is another thing we wanted to discuss. A little over a year ago, when we were talking about the truck on Zoom, uh, to the townspeople, um. During Zoom meetings and then right down to, down to voting and whatnot. There, there's often been discussion about the needs of the fire department. Uh, what is the fire department need, um, I've been asked, uh, do you really need, you know, what you have now? And um, that is outside of the, I don't think that that's something that should come from me as the fire chief or the fire commission. We discussed uh, a needs assessment being done. And I remember when it was brought up, I brought it up on, on Zoom with board of finance and board of selectmen. There was a lot of interest in that, and I think that plays a big part into the building, the trucks, future truck replacements, um. Building location, I feel that, you know, the needs. Study will tell us, will answer some of these questions. I've been asked, I was just asked the other day, do you even need the firehouse downtown? Can't the firehouse move out to, you know, with their road, um, out of course from your, your, your property? You know, and, and all I can answer is what I've been told in the past from previous studies that I've been on with you, I missed for. However, many years ago, we discussed these things. I remember there was talk that a main firehouse could be built out there, but we still have to maintain some sort of a smaller station on the existing site with. At least the engine and the ladder downtown and the rest of it, but, but there's, it's years of, I don't wanna say hearsay is the wrong word, but. It would be really nice to have in black and white in, in the document from someone within the fire commission saying, this is what they, that this is what they need.
No, I think we all agree.
It has to be, if you do this, you have to do that.
Yeah.
And it is real important that if we can get to that, I know that's something else, uh, I got you some phone numbers last week, you were looking for.
Yeah.
Last week, I think it's important that we try to really. Just like they're dealing with the engineering, getting those, those figures for that, but if we can figure out the needs assessment. Who's eligible to do it? Who can we get to do it, what are those costs, get that, who can get that moving on? I'm really eager to have someone else come in, tell the townspeople, the board of finance, board of selectmen, what the fire department.
And, and to tell the fire department what they need to do.
Correct.
No, I, I think that's, that's something that I think we're all in agreement, and, and independent assessment is a, is a valuable tool for us. And we, we thought we had connected with someone, but there's, there's a little uh, speed bump on that. I contacted them again after you gave me the number again, um, we have not spoken. Um, but I'm hoping that we will and he can help us, they can help us find someone, you know. That does this, they're, they're, they're national firms, I was, I was hopeful because they're relatively local. Um, and probably have a better understanding of small towns in Connecticut. But um, you know, let's, I, I'm hopeful that at the very least, they can help us find somewhere that can help us do this. You know, the other fellow that.
You can do it because it'll ease the cost.
No, precisely, yeah, yeah.
You can spend a lot more than the evaluation.
Well, absolutely we can, and, and the idea of here is to, is really, I think the root of this was, what are the needs of a town our size? Both demographically and area wise, where do we, do we, should we have satellite? I, I don't think there's any question we should, but let's have somebody else tell us. You know, do we need to have all these trucks doing, you know, and, and to your point, and something I, I've said for a long time, it's, it's very difficult. For us, well, not for us, I don't think we do this very often, but I can remember conversations with board of finance where. You know, do you, do you really need, or, or even people just coming up and asking me the same question that they ask, do you really need another fire truck? Why, why, we're just a small town, we've got all these other towns. Well, let's have an independent person come and tell us that these are the needs, because we can say it till the cows come home. We shouldn't be questioning you guys, when you come and say we need something. I'm not a farmer, I don't work on this fire department, I never have worked in a fire department. You guys are the guys that are out there, you have the boots on the ground, you're in that fire department every week. You know our needs, when you tell us you need something, we have to believe it, if we don't believe it. Then there's a whole nother issue that we have to talk about, uh, but this assessment will take that away from that. So it's, it's a, it's a valuable tool and something that we should, should work towards.
I think uh, just from talking to other people and chiefs and stuff. We have to be careful with the bigger companies, the larger companies that do these types of things, they don't have the, the. The knowledge of smaller rural fire departments, they're, they're just out to, to get a report put together and get it out. And I think it's, it's important that that process gets picked to do it. Uh, I don't want any part of putting this needs assessment together other than giving the, the individuals the information they need that we have. But I would like to make sure that the fire commission myself is part of the process of, this is, these are our options, let's go over the pros and cons then.
Yep.
I'd like to be part of that, hopefully Steve, you agree, uh, but I really feel strongly that we can really try and push that to the top of the pile if you will.
Yeah.
And get going on that, because it'll play a big part in a lot of things that we have to do.
The building, the future trucks, you know.
They even do a town assessment of place, if you, if you are planning a building, even building. And they say, two miles up Route eighty, West Elm Street is not gonna affect the performance of the fire department on a river road, two miles. Where the traffic lights, if one stops on it, you know, they'll say, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
They, they would tell you that the response time difference would be from this into that. I bet you can exit. Different old property and get to the center of town almost faster than you put lots of traffic, you know, maybe equal time. Yeah. Considering the turn with a lot of truck, uh, having blocked traffic, um. You're trying to get out of that, it's a two, two, you know, one major line, maybe a major and. And uh, response time is low, you know, you don't have a lot of volunteers in town. You know, so, I mean, I know when I was younger, a fireman would have jumped out of a railing or, but in high school, there, there was fifteen, twenty people there. And then there were less cars on the road. So it's, it might be, you know, they could, they could actually assess that too, whether it was sensible.
Yes.
And that way, selling the, the home next to the fire department would actually offset some of that cost.
Yep.
Uh, the demolition would be. Would be less, because you have an open area, you say just that site, I'm using that site as an example. The barns have no foundation, both those, the garage has no foundation. And the houses are the equal size of this one, but you know, with space, easier access for trucks in and out, uh, you know, it would, it would probably be. That official and it's a larger space.
It's not a flood plain. There's, there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of factors that have to be looked at. I mean, all the years my dad was in the fire department, everybody kept saying, well, insurance says, insurance says, insurance says. Well, what does insurance actually say?
Yeah.
You know, you know, that's all I ever heard is, we have to have this truck because the insurance company says so, well, okay, let's see where they say it. Instead of just hearing it, you know, and it's all these facts that you're saying, John and Tim and all that, but those are all factors that have to be, have to be done, in my opinion, have to be.
Right, and it's not of us, it's, yeah, it's not, it's equal time, it's someone that does it all the time.
Yep, because we're, we're, we're talking about, we're just getting a new truck and, and the town meeting was already brought up, this is everybody on board for the next few trucks.
Right.
That's, in my opinion, that's putting the cart ahead of the horse. Maybe, maybe they do need to be replaced, maybe they don't.
It still needs to be done.
It needs, it needs to be talked about, it needs to be quantified and expertly, because firemen want, I was the one. Want all the, all the good stuff, you know, I was a pilot, I wanted the best airplane in the world and, you know, whatever. But the facts are the facts, and I think we all need to see the facts and the facts might back up one hundred percent. You know, you don't have enough trucks, who knows?
It's not even, it's all quantity, it's, it's right now, we're talking quality effects. So we have to replace trucks for lack of quality.
Well, you, you're, you're, you're getting, you're getting one now, and if the study says you don't need those other two.
One of them gets the truck.
Then they go away and they don't get replaced and we don't have to go before the townspeople, I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, that's part of the whole picture.
If we don't need as many trucks as we have, we would probably still buy an additional new truck and subtract two old ones from the.
That's, that's, yeah, there's, I'm not saying no to any of those, I'm just saying, yeah.
What we have to do is make sure that, um, is we don't have a truck out and we're heating brakes. Or radiator blows or.
Yep.
Which is unforeseen, you, you can't go down and. Which is unforeseen, you, you can't go down and uh, every week pressure test the energy tube. Places on the trucks or. Kind of a pump, blow the seal, there's, there's, you can look at it all you want.
And and the study too.
Then you pull that lever and it blows oil. That's the day of broke, it's not.
I agree, and the study, and I think the study would reveal how, you know, we have many towns around us and they have a lot of nice. Fire trucks, just like, you know, we have, and that would be part of the study too, that if a truck goes down. Essex becomes an automatic or, you know, there's the mutual aid that we all depend upon and listen to Jim Grode. At um, you know, at at banquet's talking about mutual aid. We all used to kind of joke and take, you know, and but he, what he said is true, and until that goes away, that is a factor that this firm has to look at too.
From sitting here, being in the fire department for almost thirty years and doing trucks and talking about firehouses. We need to prioritize, prioritize priority to get this needs assessment, we've been talking about this for months. Months and months, and it seems like the needs assessment is the key that's going to unlock all the doors. To a lot of things, and if we don't do it. Then we're just beating ourselves against the wall. I've been on three or four firehouse committees, I'm just not going to waste any more of my time. We need, there's only a certain amount of companies that do these needs assessments. John brought up. We don't want to bring companies in that do Boston or New York City because all we're going to get is a cookie cutter. Some little person in the firm is going to say, hey, Deep River needs a needs assessment. Take Boston's and go down there and give it to them. If we have a company which is local. With Nickerson, and he does that.
Perfect.
For some reason, we need to get him in here and get us. A drawing, a plan, something that we could use and go back to the selection, the board of finance and the town. And move this along, which is like, we just keep beating our guns on this forever now. So it's very frustrating.
Well, and I think it was well on the way, but last year was a very interesting.
That's not the case, I would suggest that give him a call, talk to him.
Final authorization of higher level that can help you this office.
Yeah, yeah, get the information.
Well, do you feel that you need to speak to him because you would.
I would like to speak to him, I spoke to him, I spoke to, I spoke to somebody in his firm. Four months ago.
Well, you have some uh, question on the ethics maybe.
Well, there's, there is a concern if John is is a part of this fire department, I'm not so sure that he should be doing this. Um, I don't, I'm not confident that that's a.
He's a, he's sworn in fire investigator.
As far as I'm, as far as I understand, he's, he's now our, our assistant fire marshal.
He, he is not, yeah, he's not, he's only the, the, he is sworn in as a fire investigator, so he's not on salary. Okay. I don't believe he's, he's pulled, he's had any pay, uh, he's worked, uh, one fire when I was out of town.
I was told that he was a fire assistant fire marshal. We got money in the budget for an assistant fire marshal, so I assumed that that would.
I can tell you right now, he, he, he is not, he is not, Rich Smith is the deputy fire marshal and that who we're, is who we're budgeting for and who. Draws, you know, any, any type of payment for services rendered, that's Rich Smith is the name.
Terrific.
So how do we handle this?
Call him.
Well, I have no power to engage.
Get some, get some information, have him call me, I've, I've been trying to call him, Steve, I don't call him five times a day. Call him when Tim gave me the number.
I will take care of it, I'll, I'll get a hold of him, I'll get an email started, we'll get a date and we'll have him be.
That's perfect.
And then my last thing outside, I need to discuss from inside. I feel strongly um, about the existing firehouse and its conditions, and I've said it kind of in the past, and I think it's important to. To kind of get a grasp without wasting a lot of people's time of. Costs of the existing firehouse and what it needs to just.
Exist.
I mean, Angus, you know, you've been down there with me and and the roofer and the roof is well past its life expectancy. So what is the cost just to replace them? What is the cost? The boiler is from the late eighties, the heating units above the ceilings are all original from the sixties, the windows. Return the flow and the blow is outside, you know, all of those things, the masonry that's falling apart on the outside, all of those pieces. What are those costs? So to be able to discuss at a selectman's meeting, we know that, hey, yeah, you know, a new firehouse is going to be pushing. Three and a half to four million dollars, but this one, just to exist needs. It tended, to me, as you run a viable business that I run, it kind of makes it, you can see what you got to work with. What those costs are. Does anybody agree that two should be waiting for the needs assessment?
Yeah, I heard, okay, I thought I sent an email, um, I'll call him tomorrow.
Part of the roof is in that, it's steel decking, it started, it's a point where it's. Steel decking in the upstairs area where is now for equipment storage is where the pool table is, and pool tables are workbench right now. Uh, the drop ceiling is now, those piles will all come out, the insulation has had to be turned out. And then that back corner, the steel decking is rotted out, we're what we often see, start the foam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's a big part, that was a big part of one of the, one of the things that we were doing was adding a second floor and that, and that. That had to come out, um, and even, even, even using the same building and not adding a second floor. That would need to be redone, so. Yeah, get John in touch and. That's perfect, and Joyce will be uh, happy to share my camera.
Nobody else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, one last thing, as far as the trustees in their letter. Um, I will speak with the trustees and feel confident enough, and I will say this on record and on the camera. That I will speak with them, and I think that after this discussion and my report back to them, wherever we're going. Will be enough to um, show that there's some positive movements forward and, you know.
Yeah, I. I don't really like that letter. It's almost like, you know, going after us and all it takes is a meeting, this, this, you have to have a letter. To have this meeting right now and get it on the record without a threat by the trustees to sell that, that's the way I interpret it. And I think this, I think this kind of meeting we just had right here on the record. Is very easy to do and very straightforward without, without a letter like that, that's my own personal thing.
I can tell you that I, I spoke with them prior to them writing that, that the intent never was to be a threat. The intent was to get things, get things, and never was to be a threat.
The bottom line of the whole thing is here, we can all agree that we need fire, firehouse and firetruck. Town people have to vote for it, that's the bottom line, so as much as we all want to work with it, we get it. It's going to come to the citizens, we got shut down once or twice, that's my concern there.
That's why we spend as much time and effort as we did to get a building that we think is scaled down from what got voted down the last few times.
But if we do show, you know, what, what a repair.
Oh, yeah.
Restoration is always more expensive.
Yep, absolutely. That goes back to the assessment. The assessment could help out on the number of trucks. You know, trickle down to the.
From five hours to the orders of the town. What response time is. The construction, the basic building. Only the uh, the use of the building will be assessed in the assessment needs assessment.
I'm not saying that the structure of the building, the assessment, what happened, just hypothetically, just sort of constitution. The assessment comes back, says, we only need two trucks there, make three trucks there, come on, just pick outside the box. Now you have this building, we only need two trucks in there or three trucks in there, that's what I'm saying about. Not the structure of the building, I understand that.
And they're, they're doing, you know, the air pack, do you really need the air pack or you fill? Compressor, uh, if you're the only one, you know, how many tanks do you have to fill, what's your recycle on your tanks? All these different things, those are all part of it too. When every person has their tanks used during a major fire, we can't wait forty-five minutes. To fill a tank, so that's where we have that new compressor into the budget this year.
I need to move this meeting forward, I don't have that answer off the top of my head. I think we, we budgeted for, for purchase of something, I don't know what it was.
Yeah.
Facts involved.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we're, we've got the board of finance meeting coming up, I don't mean to cut you guys off.
Thank you, guys.
What we need to do is, um, I'm going to table the recovery committees, we're going to start, I'm just going to give you guys some information, that's all this was anyway. We're going to start, I'd like to start a recovery committees for at least three different. Sections that we can utilize the ARP money for. Um, I, I want folks, volunteers to come and work as advisory committees to us, um, to work on public health and welfare. To work on economic recovery and development, to work on arts. There are probably other things that I'm not thinking of, that's why I want to have this as a timeline conversation, but I'm going to put that out in a letter to the town. And and an email to the town on our website that we're looking for volunteers to help with that. We've got two years to decide how we're going to spend the money, we've got four years to spend it, I think we should do this um, as um, carefully. So, so that's that, the second thing that we have to do before we finish is, um. We added the request, uh, for the refund request from the tax collector, there are two refunds. At a total five hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, we can have a motion to uh. To, to a affirmative motion for the refund request to the tax collector, that'd be true.
I'm like a motion for the refund from the tax collectors, two refunds in the amount of five hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Thanks. All those in favor? All those opposed? None? Uh, great, that's our.
Yeah, I, I just want to say one thing about the breach and everything going on. I just want to put it on, out on, when everybody sees it, Kelsey Hill is not a super highway. Kelsey, Kelsey Hill is not a eighteen wheeler, it's not a tri-axle dump truck road. It's signed, it's posted, I want everybody to adhere to it. Um, I, I personally uh, experienced long horse trailers, I believe they're from Laramore. Coming around the corner myself and went, holy moly. Um, and then the other thing is, I think people are getting a little complacent with the stop sign at the bottom of John Winter. I've seen it twice with my eyes, where people have never even hit their brakes and fallen right through the stop sign. Because they're assuming nobody's going to come out from that side, and but there are people that live on Bar Road. There's three houses and there's construction workers that come in and out, so that's why I just want to put it on the, on the public that. Let's, let's slow down and let's stop at stop signs.
We'll, we'll get the police, the police are watching us.
Oh, yeah, and we can't catch everybody, but it's, I think it just needs to be out there, everybody needs to just pay attention.
And as far as I know, that the state has closed the road on their, their, their maps of ways, I think it's changed it, I'm not sure. So um, let's, let me move ahead, can we get a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, guys, very much.
But even this is the June regular board of finance meeting. Kirk, Adam, Martin would be the approve of minutes, I'll have Laurie remind us which.
Sorry, there are too many microphones and so many speakers, now there's a lot of feedback, this microphone needs to be.
I needed myself, I thought. Okay, wait a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
With that in mind, I will ask Laurie to remind us which, the minutes of which meetings we are about to.
We are approving the regular meeting of May twenty-fifth and the special meeting of June seventeen.
Prove those minutes of May twenty-fifth and the seventeen special meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, bit of information that May seventeenth meeting was a joint meeting. Between the selectmen and the board of finance to hear a discussion of progress or the selection process the fire department use. Um, since the fire department is right here, let's move that question up to our first agenda minutes. Board of finance, how do you wish to proceed? Do you have questions for the fire department? Do you wish any additional information?
We had a very good presentation from the fire department. It was thorough and we got a chance to ask questions, lots of questions, got lots of answers. For my own part, I think we can. We figured out what we wanted to do.
Uh, because the selectmen had it on their agenda as well, there was a, what he did. Angus, I want to hand it over to you, because the selectmen had a recommendation to come to the board of finance.
Yes, we, we, we actually adopted two resolutions, one was to um. Revise the appropriated um, amount of money for the firetruck from seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars. And the second, uh, and to, and to um, recommend that the board of finance do the same. In anticipation of the board of finance moving that forward, we also recommended that the town would be removed with special town meeting. Scheduled for next Tuesday at seven o'clock here in the town hall upstairs. Um, to do exactly that, um, I'm happy to read you the call of that, if that's not part of the resolution that you guys already have. Okay, so I've already read this once, I'm sorry to the folks watching on TV and to our friends in the fire department, everyone else has already heard, but. The electors and those persons eligible to vote in town meetings of the town of Deep River, Connecticut are hereby warned and notified. That a special town meeting will be held at the Deep River Town Hall, one seventy-four Main Street, Deep River, Connecticut on Tuesday. June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM for the following purpose. Item one, to discuss and vote on a resolution A, to increase the seven hundred thousand dollar appropriation approved. May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting for the purchase of a new firetruck. By one hundred thousand dollars to eight hundred thousand dollars. B, to finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. C, to authorize the first selectman and treasurer to determine the terms, conditions, and other details of the bonds, notes, and other obligations. D, to take actions under applicable Internal Revenue Service regulations to allow the town to make temporary advances. Of available funds and reimburse the advances from the proceeds of borrowing stamps to issue the bonds. Notes or other obligations on a tax exempt basis, and E, to authorize the first selectman to enter into contracts. For the purchase of the firetruck and authorize town officials and employees to take all other actions necessary to complete the purchase and issue of. The bonds, notes, or other obligations to finance the appropriation. And that is dated on this day, June twenty-one, June twenty-one, twenty-one. Um, so we have, uh, we have voted to move that resolution forward, uh, we voted to bring it to town meeting in the anticipation that you're going to do the same.
Uh, so we have a select, a recommendation coming from the selectmen, um, does any one member of the board of finance wish to. Respond to make the resolution? Yes, I'll make that resolution. I would uh, commit the following, result that the board of finance recommends that the town of Deep River. Increase the seven hundred thousand dollar appropriation approved at the May seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Annual town meeting for the purchase of a new firetruck by one.
for the purchase of a new fire truck by $100,000 to $800,000. The appropriation may be extended for the purchase costs and related equipment, legal and administrative fees, interest expense on temporary borrowings, and other costs related to the purchase. Further result that the board of finance recommends that the town finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $800,000.
So you'll put that into discussion. Do I have a second of that resolution? Any discussion? Hearing none, let us vote. All those in favor of the resolution, put forward by Russell, please say aye.
Aye.
Since we have four members, I am voting with record. Excellent. So I think it's fairly simple. We note that what these resolutions are taking, what the town approved, and increasing to recognize what we gave respect being the cost of the engine. At the annual town meeting, while we told the town we intended to finance the entire amount, we did not get from the town authority. So these resolutions say that we proceed with the financing. Just that's how they're constructed. I wish the board of finance to take note that I think our work here as it is done, we have brought this, the yes to we will buy it, yes, we will finance it to the town. This authorization gives to Angus and Tom the ability to negotiate going forward. Now, I assume that I will retain my my appointment as advisor to the king, but the board of finance will is going to step back. We have informed, we have directed, the resolutions reflect our desire to finance a hundred percent of the engine. It is our desire that that financing take a long term, approximately 15 years. But those small, those items, those conditions will be at the decision, at the discretion of Angus and Tom. So does any board of finance member wish to condition what you want Angus or Tom to have authority to do? That is one third as well. We will continue to inform the board of finance as we explore this. This hopefully will be done by our next meeting. Although we will work with it for years. So with that background, to be continued. We will see everyone next Tuesday night.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. They, after all this time, it seemed like this should be more. We will say that again next Tuesday.
That's what I'm waiting.
Since we have sort of went out of our solution or agenda, let's go return to the treasurer's report. Tom, would you like to take us?
Sure. Hopefully, everyone has the report. John, was that it was supposed to have been emailed to you? Did you get it?
I did, yeah, I have it, yes.
Thanks, good, thanks.
Well, as we head toward the home stretch of another fiscal year, if you look at our general fund account balances, we've got over $3,318,000 in accounts. Our major account, which is our money market account with Liberty, is 2,282. Probably will be doing another one, one more wire transfer before the fiscal year end. If you look from this month to our last month, we're we're down 1,178,620. We I made two wire transfers over the last month. One on June 4th for 750,000, one on June 11th for 300,000, for a total of 1,000, 1,050,000 dollars. If you look at the total balances on the bottom of this report, if you compare it to last month, we're down 1,150,269. If you compare it to last year, June 22, 2020, we're actually up 302,825 dollars. Coming up, our we have our bond issue, the Kirtland River Street sewer project expansion payment is due actually tomorrow. It's $23,099. It's principal and interest. Most of that is interest. The original bond issue was 605,000. We're in our fifth, I think, or fifth fifth payment. It was for 40 years. The balance after we make this payment will be 565,754 dollars. Other than that, you know, we start the cycle again whereby, you know, our tax will be getting tax revenue monies. So we'll be able to build up our our balances again. But I certainly think we're in pretty decent shape.
Any questions for Tom?
Mummified.
I used to work for a treasurer, said he was a young man, used a 30-year bond, and that bond came due in 20 years. Well, he said it's a good payment, so you can go on 30 now. Excellent, thank you. We also have audience of citizens. Is anyone out there wishing to chat with us? I don't know. Angus, why don't we get back to your recommendations or conversations that you wish to have with the board of finance and you wish to talk about?
One of the things that I want to talk to, I'm glad that you're here. Does this report reflect the almost 650,000 dollars that we received from the ARP funds? Was deposited, I think, or was wired into our accounts late last week or yesterday?
I would tend to think yes, because this these were the balances I got as of yesterday. So.
That's in our general fund. And it does not reflect in this because this was printed on Friday, I think. What we need to talk about is, and we need to talk with our auditors about this and Tom a little bit too, is what are where are we going to store that money while we determine what how to spend it? I don't, I think it should be kept separate from everything else in its own independent either line here or if the auditors agree, and I think they will, in a separate fund that you can draw on, independent from our general fund. That's, yeah, so it's given to us by the federal government as part of the American Rescue Plan. To be used for, to be determined.
Yeah.
It it's not generally an infrastructure money. It is used to help recover. We spoke very briefly at the board of selectmen's meeting about establishing some committees to help advise the community, the board of selectmen, the board of finance, how to move forward with that, how to spend that money. Yep, yep. Some of those committees will be public health and welfare, economic development and recovery, and, you know, arts, things like that, that we can spend this money on that that will that will satisfy the requirements from the federal government.
So you said this money has to be spent within four years?
Yes, we have two years to determine what to send it on and four years to spend it. We spoke again very too briefly at the board of selectmen's meeting about this. I think it is prudent for us to to be as deliberate as we can. Let's really, let's do some work and figure out how we how we can best help folks that were 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 set back by COVID and also help the community move forward in ways and help businesses move forward, and how we can help recover from any any setback that COVID-19 might have helped have put on us, but also help us to establish ways to lessen that impact if something like this happens again.
So this money should probably go to businesses, of course, that have suffered through the COVID period, not a startup business looking for some help.
Oh, yeah, I think there are there are some guidelines on that. We would have to establish our own. I think we would probably pattern something like that after the PPP, where you had to have been in business prior to March of 2020 to benefit. Because if you weren't in business, good for you for starting. But, you know, you've got no, no way to reflect.
People see this, they're probably going to, if that's the case.
That's something we we of the town have to determine, whether we want to establish a grant for this local businesses. I'm.
And this money does not have to be paid back. This is almost like a gift.
It would be a grant. I'm I'm hopeful that we can do something like that, but I'm also reluctant to do something like that because the management of something like that would be up there. Well, the board of selectmen and the committees, I'm going to start advertising for that. I I hope to have more time at the board of selectmen's meeting to speak about it. The committees, I'm going to, I'm going to get something in in the newsletter, but prior to newsletter on our website, on our email blast, to try and and get these committees established. They are advisory to the first selectmen and board of selectmen. Ultimately, who have the authority to spend this money. We will work with with those groups to try and establish how how to do that.
Are they still working on the criteria as to what you can spend it on?
We're getting guidelines once a week.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not, but those don't, yeah, so it's hard. It's even hard to do anything.
It's better, no, but it's it's better than others. We've got a good idea of what we could spend it on. Now we need to actually look at, we've got a survey from the middle of COVID that that tells us how folks were affected by this, what folks need. You know, some of our thoughts are are to establish a full-time social services for a year just to help folks get back on their feet and get themselves established.
This would be this would be a account that's a non-interest-bearing account. I'm sure we can't get.
That's what we need to establish. I believe that that's the case.
Yeah.
You know, we can go out and invest it in Apple, really make some money for three years. I don't think that there were lots to do that. I think it has to be managed.
Sure, that's the case.
It has to be spent or the projects have to be started and in progress in four years.
It has to be spent in four years.
We spent, done spending.
We will get another 650,000 probably next year. But we ultimately are getting 1,300,000.
Actually, Chair of the school is getting.
The school gets another amount that I I have not paid that much attention to what the schools are getting because they we don't have any really input on to what they spend it on. But part of the ARP was set aside and it's an ESSER S fund that that every school or district receives money and guidelines is how they can spend it.
Excellent. Again, I urge that we do not intermingle this with the general fund. There are different regulations.
So right now, it's in the general.
It is in the general fund right now. We will speak with our auditors to ensure that we can put it into our account. I'm confident that we can.
Oh, yeah. I hope we can separate that, so otherwise it's going to be a pain in the neck. So a regular line for that.
Right.
Actually, it seems logical that you may not be able to invest in general.
Yeah, I think I don't think that's the case.
So we'll work on that.
How much, how much did you receive with right now?
650. You know, that's a round number. I want to suggest it was 651, 957 or something like that.
When you say setting up a separate account, it is like, we have set up a separate account for our capital. The company has a mortgage account, the indicator funds, et cetera, are separate funds that the auditors will have to do. I'm curious, they're probably have to be independent of those funds that. I don't know.
Those are some of the details that we're learning about right now. We definitely have to defend every expenditure. We have documented every expenditure, show what was how and why we spent it and where we spent it.
Anything else that you would generate?
I think we got the two big things, the fire truck and the and that. I don't think so, but it will come to me or you'll remind me.
Well, I'm going to sort of jump upon it as a recommendation with selectmen that Angus and I need to soon sign the contract with our auditors who are going to be with us, who originally scheduled to be with us tonight, but due to complications will not. So it was a further thing we used to go talk to them, which talk to us about slightly next month. So, but anyhow, they have presented us with a contract. Total cost of the contract is, I believe, $35,000, which consists all their activities in the town, of which we are responsible. We the town are responsible about 19 of that. Some of it goes, the remaining amount goes to school, remaining amount goes to water pollution control. Would anyone be kind enough to give me a resolution authorizing Angus and I to sign the contract with Mahoney Stable to do the audit for fiscal year ending beginning January 1, 2020 and ending at the end of this month, June 3, 21? Did I get a resolution?
You're looking at midlife action to do.
You've started and rescued many.
I think to authorize and to sign the contract with 35,000.
The board of finance sets it for the whole town, others, some of it, that is the rules. Are you authorized out loud or are you just playing? Discussion.
Your question is, is that 31,000 the same as what similar to what we mentioned?
It's the exact dollar amount that we have in cost response to. They charge 15, 15, they charge the town 15,500 here this year. So I estimate 19, but we have, we and we have budgeted 20.5, so it is well within our budget. All those in favor of Ronnie, Angus, and I, sign, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I make a comment now that we've done it? I I like, well, I say this very well, very much. I think they are familiar with with our area and our town. I do think that this is this is our fourth year with them. This will be our fourth year with them, and it is time for us to begin to think at least entertaining some some proposals from from other groups. Not not because I want to change, but because I think we should look at some other groups.
Although I like Angus, I think they've become very familiar with town. We are gotten, have to be comfortable working with them, but it is a prudent thing. Does any, so with that in mind, the what remains is a budget preview, a better review of our current expenditures. Angus and I periodically need, certainly we need often, but once a week, it seems to get in and we go over where we are on the expenditures. Last time we did that was like the 14th, and I sent to all of you, Jim, you may not know what, but I will get it better. In that I gave you where Angus and I currently expect the budget to be. We currently expect the budget to have a deficit. Expenses would see revenues by about 94,000 dollars. Now, while it's a deficit, I offer you that as first in the bottom. We assembled a budget and assumed we would hold on the surplus for about 35. We made some changes during the year that raised that expectation call on the surplus to about 209. So coming in at 95, 96, I think, is positive. I think those things, which certainly we had to make plenty of assumptions. And we go, when we look at some of the numbers I was putting out there, I am. Uh, I assume that the grammar school spends all of their money. When you look at these expenditures, they have several hundred thousand dollars they have not been called on, so. And that could do in our favor. I already called that out because it sets a large number, but, um, I mean, I think it is true. Now, with that introduction, does, how much detail do you folks wish to go into? There is a danger in allowing me to leave the conversation because I find the numbers interesting. Each number has a story and there's lots of numbers doing. Does anyone have anything they specifically wish to focus on in the budget? Let's start with expenditures.
There was one slash, um.
Slap. Good. Okay, and if it's the copier, it has gone off, but I think I'll ask for some play there. Angus has been telling us for some time that 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 number was under pressure, so.
Yeah.
He he is under pressure and I think we are about negative on that at the moment.
I will point out to you two things I'm investigating. The first one, I'm hopeful is is error. Uh, but the assessor's salary is considerably higher than it should be, over over spent. Um. And the, uh, there was one other one that that I really wanted to address. The tele- telephone system is also overspent. And that, again, I've been telling you that that's going to be, we had some, uh, some glitches in our tr- in our transition, um, that that drove that fuss up. Other than that, I think most of this is is pretty close to where it's supposed to be.
Excellent. I think here's what I said I wasn't going to do. Uh, for a budget of fifty thousand dollars for buildings, we have approximately fifteen, only sixteen thousand dollars remaining in that. Is there not building that you've been, uh?
Oh, no, we're we're working on half this. Hopefully, we're gonna have the whole, the town all repointed. Um, some work done on the steps and things like that. We're working on, uh. The gazebo's need new roofs. We're just struggling with getting materials right now. That bid has been out for quite a long time.
Okay, but but and you thinking it will be coming out of this?
I want it to be out of the city's budget, because we've got a lot of plans for next year. You know, the the tri-town building needs, needs quite a bit of protection, so.
Did we get all the money from FEMA in last year's storm?
Ah, we are, we just completed that application, uh, today. There's actually one, one holdup, and that's the tree that we cleared at, um, the, uh, Tom Hill Cemetery. And for some reason or another, FEMA is on up, but we need to have, uh, the the permission for that. I can't figure out the option.
That's an interesting subject. Um, because of storms, we have over spent such things.
That's, that's.
Will be reimbursed for those expenses. We have been having conversations with our auditor, whether it's appropriate to recognize FEMA money, which we will receive in the future, in another fiscal year, whether we should attempt to bring it back this year or just, just let it be.
Yeah, I I'm gonna leave that to the auditors as to where it goes, but we will, we will get reimbursed as will P C F. That money that was overspent that you see in this will be, will be zero.
So where where I was going, where the, what originally said we're about ninety thou- ninety four thousand short. So if you're over that eleven thousand, continue, continue, continuing, when I got that back, it brings that ninety four down to eighty two, eighty three.
That will come back and you'll also.
That's correct.
And that's a good observation, Glenn, and and I would expect that from you to be a numbers guy.
Well, let's, on again, so it brings that original hundred thirty that we needed from the red day fund down to eighty some, so.
Yeah. And I think, I think that you will see a little bit more, um, from that because Parks and Rec also is getting some money from, uh, thanks, um. For the over expenditure that Parks and Rec experienced, not not from the storm, but from.
Quite the life for the fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I just question about, sorry, it's actually the services expenses. They have about fifty percent money to pay all this.
Yeah, I can't figure that out. We're getting their bills. Um, I was like, don't, yeah. No, why would we do that? I I don't, I don't know that. That's one of the things I have highlighted just off of Kathy.
Why is that?
That should be totally, that should be fully expected. We didn't, we didn't save any money with them this year.
I think the assumption we made when we did our year-end recent.
Yeah.
You mentioned about the gazebo's that work has to be done on the gazebo, so they were actually gifts from, um, the Rotary.
Yeah.
They were from the Lions Club.
Yeah.
Um, is that, I don't know how expensive it would be to actually do those repairs.
Well.
But I'm wondering if maybe, uh, you know, maybe the clubs would help out.
Uh, that would be terrific.
In that's the case, I mean.
That would be terrific. The, um, the, uh.
I know the Rotary, uh, actually donated the gazebo, which is next to the pond.
Was that the Rotary? I thought that was the Lions, but the Lions.
Lions is down at the, at the riverfront.
Yeah. Um, we have, uh, benefited greatly. In fact, I put a big thank you in the newsletter, uh, a couple, I think, two newsletters ago to the Woodcock team who. Who went down and scraped and painted the gazebo down at the landing. We have a a bid in from them and they did that to do that roof. That fellow just disappeared. Every time I talk to him, I'll be there in a couple of months. Um, we need to get another proposal to get that roof done. The roof at the gazebo over here definitely needs to be redone, and I think that it would be appropriate to have that repainted as well. The proposal that we got was from a local roofer and was about five grand.
About grand.
Five grand. The other proposal that we got was from the guy who does most of the other roofs in town. It's a small job for him, but that was, that is like twelve thousand. So, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go back out to bid on that and hopefully get some of these. I'm I'm concerned materials are gonna hold it up.
Oh, yeah.
Cedar shake is not a, not an easy material to get right now.
She's about five thousand to three roof.
Yeah. Cedar shake, that's it.
That's a small.
That's a small. I would tell you, that's why I'm putting a mud roof on my house.
I mean, I could bring this before I wrote it.
Yeah, mud roof, yeah. Get through these. So, yeah, that that's, that's what, point well taken. Um, I'd love to get an Eagle Scout to come down and and scrape and paint the, uh, the gazebo. Uh, the roof, I would, I would want to do professional.
Isn't there a roofing merit? Let's start with.
I made it, I made it too close, Scott, so.
There is a merit.
Thanks to.
Sure, so, but we we have some, we, building trades have kicked up with voice calls.
Is that right?
I can say building trades and they have to do any of the building trades at three hundred percent. So there is a carbon merit hedge.
Okay, well, let's speak to that. We have a phone call today.
They would stop.
Well, we got a phone call today from an Eagle Scout who's looking for a project, and if you guys will help. Um, I don't know how it works, so let's have a conversation about how that works, because I wouldn't want to put a scout out there on his own, but but listen, get some, um, assistance.
We do, we do classes for the, for the voice calls.
Okay.
Very nice. Um, let's talk about waste removal recycling. We have had conversations often, um, but it seems to be a good news. Let's take the tipping fees, which you always had an uncomfortableness. We estimated, budgeted ninety four. We've got ten thousand dollars left. Is that a tiny issue, do you think? We just don't have a release? Do you think we will come in around budget?
Well, I think we'll, I can't, this day we'll get at least one more bill for this year.
To that number.
And if you know, we are actually, we overspent, uh, recycling fees.
That was the next thing, yes.
I just sent them.
Get another one of those.
Sent them another check today, and I expect we're gonna get another one for.
Oh, okay, all right. And what tipping is out there right now? So the ninety two, I think that fifteen left is under pressure?
Yeah, uh, no, that's, that should be fine.
Good. Um, and just as we usually do, Park and Rec is always a mystery, just because they do things, much of which is spending on people contributing to them. So I'm not quite sure how to address their future expenditures. I certainly eliminated their futures, their revenues for contributions, so that confuses my understanding, but nevertheless, they are.
Well, right now, they're back in full swing. They have a good camp set up already. They have good attendance going with that, uh, and they've got ballgames and and I'm hopeful that they're gonna be theater and doing some of the things that they do to raise money.
Very good. Again, and anyone who wants to go about, we have, there's always a mystery. State, we're supposed to pay state for a state to present state trooper, and they do not seem to charge us in a kindly manner, and they do not charge the full amount.
Just got that bill.
We just got the bill, right? Is our estimate of eighty five still a valid number or?
I I don't know. Maybe by what? I think the bill is for consistent money.
Eighty five percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
They charge, so we budgeted two oh five and remember next year.
We're going to see, um, yeah, that that most of the police is gonna come in pretty close, uh, this year with the addition of new troopers. We're actually adding a fourth. Uh, constable, not to increase the budget, but just increase the ability to cover the budgeted shifts. Because these guys are pulled in different directions. They're all part timers, except for, um. Paul is going to be, uh, moving into full-time work, uh, but the other are part timer. They get pulled in different directions, and we're finding that sometimes we can't get the shifts covered with the number of guys that we have. They don't want to work every week. Now, the three guys, they have some type task. So we have another, uh, trooper who is retiring in September, um, and we're gonna take him on, uh, to to help fill those shifts.
That'll be in next year's budget. I assume we will have uniforms and things like that.
Yeah.
The full-time one, we have to give benefits?
Full-time, full-time, we're, we're, he does not need our benefits, but we 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 do have to.
Give him a stack.
Uh, I draw your attention to the elementary, uh, budget. They have about two hundred thirty and a half. It says your two hundred thirty three thousand dollars remain unspent. Uh, I assume the numbers I gave you, they spend all their money, but that is a, a large number. They're not much more, what you're doing. Uh, same is true, uh, same is true. Uh, um, we've got eleven thousand dollars in the maintenance account for the school. Do you expect that?
Oh, that's gonna be spent, yeah.
I can guess what I expect.
Yeah. I I I think most of it has come, just didn't get into this.
Okay, cool. And the region school has for five dollars more than you, but. Who would ever thought that?
Just say no. Sorry, bro.
Exactly.
No, it's not.
I remind you, General Capital, we told the fire department, the fire department last year asked for seventy five thousand dollars, seventy five thousand, or seventy, okay, to buy more bottles. They then applied for the grant. We put the grant numbers in here for the spending numbers. Didn't get the grant, but they certainly will spend the seven they asked for, so that is also a searing one. Um, and while there is still ten thousand dollars left in the architectural for the fire department, do you see that happening in this budget?
I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we will get our proposal from the engineering firm that's trying to do some work and we could spend some of this money on.
This money, this year's money? All good. And there is a part upgrade of five thousand four hundred that has yet to be spent, that is somehow it's gonna happen.
I I'm sorry, I was.
Oh, sorry, a part upgrade, that five thousand four hundred we budgeted, we have not spent it yet, but.
Yeah, no, that's, we actually, um, spent some of that money on on, uh. I'm not sure why it's not reflected here, because we paid that bill already, so we'll check on that, and and there is, uh, new grills are ordered and on their way for for the park.
All right. The grills are good, Mr. Mayor. Um, let us turn to revenues, and we should, and, uh, my assumption is to note that essentially, we will not receive all the revenues that we had anticipated the budget. However, I now wish to confuse you and talk about the beginning of this sheet, and while we won't stop any twenty, if you look at the vertical property taxes, we've actually over collected. Well, let's bring it the other way. Oh, let's do it. Uh, we assume that we will collect ninety eight percent of the, uh, current revenue. People have, we've over collected that. Now, just put that into a context. Last year, when we put into this, uh, revenue, this budget together, we were very concerned how it obviously would influence, affect. The collection of taxes, and that citizens have certainly stepped up to their obligations to pay for that.
I believe they do. Right.
Thankfully, and I am this real serial liar, yes.
Well, that's not, we haven't over collected. We've collected the amount that the grant list said we had to collect. We figured out, oh, we should be about this much, but the grant list was more.
Yeah, you, you are correct. The grant was come from the assessors, a hundred percent. We made the assumption that we will collect one year ninety eight percent. I'm just offering that we have collected in excess of that one, the.
But it's still, it's based on the grant list, so it's not, we don't want to.
No.
Oh, no. Now, as you glance down again on the whole budget, we have given, we give tax relief to the elderly, we give tax, I guess, free leave to the fire department. The numbers are not, they do not reflect. We have given to the elderly forty nine thousand dollars in this year's budget, and to the, uh, fire department gave ten thousand five. I don't know why they're not collecting, but they're not, but, um, if you continue to glance down, you will see that, uh, prior to some of the older taxes, we have got, we budgeted a hundred fifty. We've got a hundred fifty five, enters with budget fifty, but collecting ninety six. We have collected, citizens have come forward to pay. I suggest that that number in excess of budget is close to a hundred fifty thousand dollars that we have collected in excess of the budget to collect. And I'm including through that hundred and fifty when there's the assessments that are made for the sewer fees. Um, but we budgeted twelve thousand for, was it Union Street, and we've got twenty five thousand, so, and if you look down, you'll see the same thing more than, uh, was it Living Street or something? Yes, but anyhow, we're, the collections are coming in well, and, uh, much of that is probably contributory to citizens selling their house, and they have to pay all those fees, but. I mean, I do not have a reason, it just seems to fit in. It then fits into, we have visiting permits, we budgeted fifty, we got a hundred and five. So we have considerable amount of revenues coming in that we did not budget, but we shall go through each one of them. If you glance down their short-term investments, we budgeted thirty five, we short twenty two. Um, I have the municipal energy. We made a mistake there. It is in our budget twice. School agreed to pay us twenty six thousand dollars for their benefits. They get for the energy upgrade, some reason, and, uh, I suspect as many of them is. Uh, some reasons in there twice, so I'll take responsibility.
I'll take the heat for that after that.
Well, it's right, it's been three people touching.
We sit there, yeah.
Thanks, and I are both arguing about who is more responsible for the state, but it is a mistake, therefore it is less revenues that we can expect. Uh, here's one that I have worthy of reflection. We assumed in this budget that we would take forty five thousand four, five hundred and forty dollars out of our capital funds. We have not taken it. Uh, so when I say ninety four thousand dollars shortfall, that assumes that we will not take money out of our capital funds. We add, I added the revenues that we do not have to, so there's an example, and I shall continue to highlight. The FEMA grant, we had assumed two oh five, there's a revenue is not coming out, and we had assumed that we would, uh, accept, we would get to the loser grant from the state, we have not called on that, so. There it is, again, going back to, I believe, there is a shortfall in the budget revenue which contributes more to that section. So that's about all I wish to comment on, unless anyone wishes to, or they have more to do. So let me understand the votes. We have a new budget, but we're not. We have it in expenditures and in the revenue, it's a state grant, Angus particular.
And most, most of money is money that is designated for certain projects, that are capital projects that we can use. Um, if you don't spend it one year, it accumulates. We've built up, um, three, this is our third year, and we have a project to, uh, recite, to redo the sidewalk. On, uh, rebate from the firehouse up to the highness, because that is volume versus the center. So we're gonna redo that, um, and that will use up the better part of that money. Anything remaining from that, we will utilize to supplement the connectivity grant that we have to finish the sidewalk to go down River Street. So that, you should see that, that that work should be done this summer, and all that loss of money that we accumulate will be spent. We spend it. And all that loss of money that we accumulate will be spent. We spend it first and then they get reimbursed us.
Any additional questions, folks? Any new old business you wish to bring up? If that is true, I will, if there is no new business that we wish to bring up of the old business. Uh, and I have a motion to adjourn. John start.
Yep. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. One favor, say aye. Thank you very.
Aye.